We have a good filtration system for heat loss.
We are five thirty now, Mr. Mayor, ready to run.
You can let me start and then make your way over.
Thanks for the Hallmark Foundation's instructions.
You're welcome. And as a certificate of German as well.
I'm going to call to order the city council's successor agency, Staten House, at three special meetings.
Council agency authority member Taylor?
Here.
Council agency authority member Torres is absent. Council agency authority member Warren?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chairperson Van?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Shogard?
Here.
Is there any public comments at this time on closed session?
We receive none.
Were you anything written?
None, sir.
Okay, our closing public comment section. Okay, Madam, would you tell us about closed session?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today we have two items under conference with legal counsel and his implication, significant exposure pursuant to government cosection 50956.92. Thank you.
Our recess to our closed session. Okay, we'll back out of recess, back out of closed session. At this time, I'm calling to order the Staten City Council's successor agency, Housing Authority, at Joint Red Building at six thirty. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council agency authority member Taylor?
Here.
Council agency authority member Torres?
Here.
Council agency authority member Warren?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chairperson Van?
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Shogard?
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have anything to report on a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There's nothing to report.
Okay, if you'll please join me in a pledge to our flag, Mr. Ruth, would you lead us, please?
But you're a generous citizen of the United States of America. Consider your honor and political stance, or your nation under our individual and the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you for the honor.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation at the awards tonight. Our first presentation is on the Times of Public Affairs on federal legislative powers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, everyone in town, the public affairs. Very nice to be here with everyone again tonight. I'll try to be quick. Starting off with the Sacramento legislative statistics. Last time I was here, we were in the middle of bill signing, so the governor had a whole bunch of bills on his desk. So I just wanted to bring you the final tally that you can see of what was received and signed and vetoed. About a fifteen percent veto rate. That's historically quite high. It's almost even with what the governor did last year, almost double what he did the first year of that session. So it's an interesting rate, but I think it's, most of the veto messages have been around budgetary constraints and budgetary concerns going into a uncertain budgetary year next year. We had a deficit this year, as you know, we're anticipating another deficit next year, but it probably will be more mild than this year's. The governor is trying to be very diligent when it comes to what kind of legislation he's signing as it relates to increased spending over time. Just historical stats if you're interested, you can see the last two sessions of how many bills made it to his desk and were signed and the veto rates as well. So like I said, almost fifteen last year, eight a year before. Twenty twenty-one had kind of the end of the pandemic when it comes to the bill caps and how many bills legislators had introduced. That's why you see a lot smaller number there, a lot smaller veto rates because a lot of those bills were related to the pandemic and not necessarily a sweeping policy, as well as a pretty hefty surplus coming out of that year as well. So now a whole lot of financial ebitos coming out here. Looking forward to twenty twenty-four, into next year, legislature will come back first week in January. As I've said before, a couple of areas of topics that I would keep my eye on for next year. I can't promise all of these will come up next year in depth, or frankly, any of them besides housing, of course. But a couple of areas that we are predicting might be of some interest. Housing and land use, as always, will be forefront in California. There are several dozen bills passed this year on housing. There are going to be several dozen more next year. That is not going to stop anytime soon. Ground act reform, there was some work around the edges, I'll call it this year, when it comes to ground act reform and being able to have the flexibility to meet virtually. There was some bills around neighborhood councils and other committees that can meet virtually as long as they meet in person a couple of times. So we might see the expansion of that continuing and allowing for greater flexibility. I just want to let you know that anything around virtual meetings has never been talked about as a requirement. It's always been talked about as a flexibility if you want to, not required. So going forward into next year, there might be some more movement on that, especially as we change committee chairs that might have some different opinions. Public Records Act requests, there's a famous ballot measure that's going around right now that's gathering signatures that will be pretty tough on local governments when it comes to public records act requests. Makes it very difficult for cities to respond and reply. There might be some legislation this year to counteract that ballot measure. It does affect the legislature as well, so they have a vested interest in it. You also might see some records retention legislation this year when it comes to how long you guys have to maintain records for public eye, as well as potentially some lessons learned from the pandemic when it comes to the PRA. There might be some cleanup legislation around that. Transportation safety, a lot of Porch County cities right now are talking about e-bike safety in their duties. E-bikes are very prolific right now, they're also very dangerous. And I think that is a few that is for trying to understand whether or not there's anywhere, any way we can help promote e-bikes as a form of alternative transportation. However, there's some safety concerns that need to be addressed. So there are some Porch County cities that are considering some legislation on that, as well as some other, mostly coastal cities going up and down the state that are interested. Automated speed enforcement was also passed in this session and signed by the governor. Kind of a first time thing, pilot program. So it's exactly what it is, it's speed cameras that got you and they mainly take it, right? So kind of a new territory for us to dive into. So there might be some more legislation fixing whatever they're learning from their pilot program or expanding on it. But right now it is a somewhat long-term pilot to start the efficacy, if you will, of speed cameras computed. Defensive overdose protection, we've talked, prevention, we've talked about that in length this year. We will probably see another attempts at trying to curb the defensive overdose pandemic that we're going through, the epidemic we're going through. And then sidewalk vending, something we talked about here several years ago, actually, not lately. I'm hearing a lot of that come up this last couple of months from a lot of cities statewide. Sidewalk vending was a reality we had to deal with about five years ago when the bill was passed. Kind of had a lull for two, three years, and it seems to be back in force as you see more and more sidewalk vendors kind of helping their game all setting. But I know it's no longer just a ice cream cart walking around. It's a too easy up situation with an open flame and kebab meat going off the top and tacos. So it's become a big deal and it's become a big business, frankly, that's quite unregulated. So it's possible we might see some work in that front. It's a pleasure to say it's of interest to protect public safety and public health when it comes to standards. Moving on very quickly to SB three fifty-seven, we've talked about it a couple of times, by Senator Weiner for the Waldering bill that we've been kind of working on with staff. So we did set up, participated in a call with Cal Cities Public Safety Officers, as well as the City of National City Police Chief. I told you that we were doing that. So that call happened last week. Kind of three points that I think we're working on together at the same time is data gathering, like I said, with other cities around the state that are experiencing the same issue. Coalition building with those, sharing information, how are you addressing it? How are we addressing it? Can we find some common ground? And then pondering some legislative solutions to really go after it and really help with enforcement. So a lot of ideas out there right now, a lot of research that still needs to happen, but it is an ongoing conversation that will be in office. Leadership changes, I've talked about this in the past with a semi-member, Robert Reva speaking, I'm your speaker, but Senator, I don't think I mentioned it last time I was here, but Senator Mike McGuire is the recently announced new pro temp, taking over for Senator Atkins from the San Diego area. Senator McGuire is from Hillsburg, up in Northern California. This is, could not have been more different than the assembly transition of power. This was extremely equitable handshake agreement, fix all smiles, not the contested battle that the speakership was in the assembly. So a semi-member McGuire will take over sometime next month in an official caucus vote. And then from there, you will see committee assignments be rolled out in November, December, going into next year, which is going to really set the stage for a policy, depending on who those committee members are, those power areas. I will say, it's a little strange that Senator McGuire received this vote because he is turned out in three years from now. So it's going to be a short term deal when it comes to this new pro tempship, but either way, it's something that he's been working for, for a long time. He's been working for a long time and during. Moving, shifting gears to the federal level. Last time I was here was right before the federal budget year ended. Surprised it ended without a budget. We are in a continuing resolution those last couple of days that takes us through November seventeenth. So what that means is our current budget, our current budget from Washington DC last year just gets pushed out at the same funding levels, same thing, for another couple of months into November seventeenth. So it's something that everyone can agree upon and it buys more time for additional negotiations for a full year budget, if you see. Right now, there's a lot of major roadblocks of why we don't have a budget. First, we don't have a speaker right now, so we'll talk about that in a second. But other than that, spending caps on the appropriations bills are always going to be the number one reason why there's delay in the budget, as well as in praying and Israeli aid right now, what's going on overseas and border funding is another typical pressing point on the budget that is a disagreement between parties. What does that mean for our earmarks? It means nothing right now for our earmarks. Our earmarks are still waiting for earmark, I should say, still waiting for the full budget to be adopted. So when that whole budget is adopted, it should be in there as long as they include any earmarks. So we're in a good place still, we're where we need to be. No other update on that other than praying for a compromised budget anytime to be able to include all earmarks. So moving on to the speaker. Peter McCarthy from California was removed from office October third. It is the first time in history that's happened for a speaker to be removed the way he was moved. Pretty fascinating, a couple of days after that, to be honest with you. Two hundred and seventeen votes is the magic number right now to be able to become speaker on the floor. That's because we are missing, there's about two vacancies right now in the House, which breaks down that number, usually it'd be two eighteen, you need, but you don't need two seventeen right now. There's been a couple of tries, Republican C. S. Lee from Louisiana and Republican George from Ohio have pulled out some very public bids in caucus and on the floor, pulled out failed. We are on hold, on a holding pattern right now. We cannot conduct any business in the House until a new speaker is elected, that is in the bylaws. So we are waiting for the next heir apparent to come up and get some votes in caucus and then votes on the floor in order to continue on our business. Just to make you a picture about how disjointed this is right now. There was a press release of a Republican candidate from Minnesota who thought he was going to be the next elected to try on the floor and forty-three minutes later, they removed the press conference. So it's hour by hour in terms of who we think might get the next vote to figure out who's going to be the speaker. I didn't put it on the presentation, but also, as you are aware of, we swore in Senator Butler as our new senator in California to replace Senator Feinstein. She has also announced, since I've been here last, that she's not going to run for reelection. So it's a very short term bid for the senator. It was a very, that has a lot of, that has a domino effect in terms of, you know, understanding that she's a placeholder, really puts another spin on the election going into next November. She did, what's interesting is we're still not clear what she's going to do with her staff. She has to staff, fully staff up in the next, you know, couple of months in order to conduct her business as senator and then she'll have to wind back down again. So the way it works is Feinstein staffers do not automatically go over to that office. So they were all served with a sixty day termination. And then they can be rehired if Senator Butler, if they would like, but we have not heard of that happening yet. So it's very possible she comes in with a brand new team for the year and that's it. But some Feinstein staffers are really hoping to stick around to ride out that last term. But we'll have to see. I should mention, Senator Butler is excited to do earmarks next year, so she will have a bite of the apple of earmarks for one session, one year. So when that comes up in early next year, I do expect her to be participating in that process. But it'll be her one and only chance at earmarks where Senator, yeah, Senator Feinstein had several attempts at it because they were done for so long. Granted, under consideration, we've kind of pieced this together over the months that I've presented, but I just wanted to put them all in one place for you to see. Those are four brands that we've submitted, that we are with staff, and we are waiting to hear back from, I think, Safe Streets Girls, while they're one, they're back from, for this, probably this week or next week, I would say. And the rest of them, we are still actually waiting. I'll look to you as soon as I know. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How's our million dollars? Our million dollars for a police station?
Right where it needs to be, you just need a federal budget.
It made it.
It made it, it made it where it needed to be. So you're lumped in with everyone else nationwide right now, which is a good thing.
So once it's signed by the president, you're a check, right?
I, man, I wish it worked that way. Once it's signed by the president, you will have to negotiate, you'll have to go over negotiations with the agency you got it from, so I think in this case, it's Department of Justice. And then you'll have to sign a contract and then you can start spending it down in reverse, same way, right?
That's what I thought. Anything else? Anyway, thank you, George.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it gives me great pleasure at this time to have our presentation by Orco Block. Orco Block is going to be here tonight to share their mission with the city council and provide information on their current operations. Mr. Ruth and Stephanie, see, I got it right, I have a good opportunity chance. Welcome tonight. I will tell you that Orco just finished their seventy-fifth year celebration. And I still remember, since I was born in forty-seven, I knew Peter Booth very well in memory. And I still remember him giving me a tour of the kilns, which was still there. And so it's interesting because some of the original formations for the blockings on display here is quite historic. And I do remember that we used to chase the chickens off the Catala Beach so we could get the trucks to it. But thanks to area leader, we were able to fix that flooding in nineteen eighty-eight. Now, if you guys all know how old I am, let's hit the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and staff. I couldn't do a better introduction for Rick Booth. I'm James O'Malley, I'm a ladies consultant, I do entitlements. And before I introduce Rick and Stephanie, I want to thank the staff. I've been doing this gig for quite a few years. I've never been invited to say hello to the entire city council right when the process starts. I think that's a great attitude, I think it's a great spirit, I think we're doing some great things with the Orco property in the city of Stanton. So with that, I'd like to introduce a man much more interesting to me, a lot better looking. Rick, please.
Thanks, James. You know, James, we make a lot of concrete block very well, but we really appreciate your help with this. This is new to us and my daughter Stephanie here. And with them, we'd like to move forward and do something different with our property. We'd like to create something that you would be proud of and we could be proud of. And, you know, I thought if I could go back in history, nineteen fifty-two, you know, my dad, his partner, buys this land across the way. And any of the five had gotten as far as Bees Boulevard, the Garden Road Freeway was yet to be built. And I don't know that the four or five freeway was actually planned at that time, but anyhow, here we are seventy-three years later, seventy-seven years as a company. But anyhow, hard work, just enough brains and just the right amount of luck. And so we're still here and Stevie, we're trying to hit one hundred years, right? So anyhow, we've been honored this and we've enjoyed being involved in one of the turns we highly as like a dip, and we've helped something in the community. One of our favorites is across the way, the Stanton Boys and Girls. My dad and a guy by the name of Bob Prowley said, you know, we want to do something at the age we are that will give back to the city. And he was made a Orco block across the way and my dad got masons to come in for a great price, but doing according to the code, exactly to the code. It's a great building and Bob Prowley was just a wonderful partner of my dad doing that whole thing. So we'd love to have a legacy left here. And, you know, we supply jobs, we had since fifty-two. We could do something that supplies more jobs than we do right now. And so Steph, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, I remember when I was little walking the plant using my dad's briefcase to come to work at Orco with my grandpa and my dad. And just over the years, being involved with the Boys and Girls Club, you know, really finding a liking to Stanton. And today, I agree with my dad that we can really do something that you will be proud of and that we'll be proud of and that we're really excited about.
And Steph, your two boys have gotten four of the rides across the way, right?
Yes, many times.
So we wonder if there's any questions of the two of us and the Ruth family in general.
Yeah, Mr. Ruth, I think the council, as well as myself and staff, we're really looking forward to sitting down and going over what your ideals are and what your vision is. I think it would be great for us to work with you because we can kind of give you the vision of how we feel about all of Bees Boulevard. As you know, we started down south in the town of Woodyo Thirty-nine, BRV cloud, some new housing projects. We're developing the center at the Sam's Club and this is your work I would write on up. So you're probably the next area of the city that's running under your transformation. We appreciate you wanting to do it. We also appreciate the fact that you spent a great deal of time trying to figure out exactly what we think your needs are. And so we're glad and anxious to sit down, talk with you and share ideas. And I think that's what's going to make it really successful. I think every project that you can see that we've done has come to fruition and yours will come to fruition. And then we can all enjoy, you know, booth center or booth towers or wherever else we desire to be. Thank you. Anybody have a question for Mr. Ruth or Andrew?
We came up on the USC and UCLA battle over your designs years ago. And I was wondering, you also submitted some other designs after that that you've been thinking about. I was wondering if you were calling back to any of those designs that we saw or if you're taking a completely fresh look at a project now.
Yeah, the student, the student design competition was really for fun. It was my sister and brother-in-law's involvement studying real estate development at USC grad school. So it was really neat to see what they came up with. But that, at that point, it was really for fun and curiosity. We're really starting with new ideas. I think maybe since then, I don't know, we've had the conversation and our interest has been piqued, but we're starting from scratch.
You know, Stephanie, taking what you just said, COVID hit five years ago again. And we talked about that some, that is built there, that there should be a space that a person would work from home in design. So yeah, that's one of the things that has been different from that time. That's a good point, Carol, and I really appreciate that you and the others came here. We appreciate the chance to talk here, like we said, but also, we've been pretty nicely, nicely welcomed in here. We're at the beginning and we wanted to start with you and that's what we're doing right now.
Anyone else? Mr. Ruth, thank you for being here. I also want to thank you and your entire family for all the support donations that you've given to our community over the past seventy-five years, beginning with your mom and dad and the rest of your family. You've always been there to help us, we're needing help. And we're going to make sure that this project is done the way in which you ideally would like to have it done and also benefit to our entire community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Dave. And yeah, we've, it's been a pleasure to, after some of the finer points that my parents did, that Stevie and I, so we're carrying on the legacy. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, that ends our present special presentations and awards. So move the consent calendar, these may all be acted on simultaneously. I'm happy, Ruth, do you have any requests for the voting?
Yes, Mayor, yes, sir.
About any closing comments?
We have none.
Okay, great. Is there a motion?
Almost a second.
Okay, all in bedroom? Any opposed? Anybody opposed?
Parents just were, the counter purposes to be performed vocal. We have a motion by Councilor Warren, we second by the way, they're representing Dan. I'm an absolute vocal, okay?
I'm with Taylor and her family.
That's, this is why, you guys are throwing me off today to say thank you. A motion by Councilor Taylor, second by Mayor Lieutenant Van, I will not abstain with roll call vote. Council agency authority from Torres. Council agency authority member Taylor.
Yes.
Council agency authority member Warren.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chairperson Van.
Yes.
Mayor Chairman Shogard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business and we have no new business. Because I hear only will see no news. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hall communications. Have we received anything written?
No written communications, I've been receiving, sir.
Have we had any requests to speak?
No requests to speak.
At this time, I'm going to open all communications. Who's already willing to address the city council on any subject matter in our jurisdiction? You have three minutes. Of course, no more hearings, come back, mayor, council initiated business. This will be your upcoming council meeting, sir.
Correct, so at this time, a fifteen a announcement. Here, Ben?
I am. Just wanted to say, my son John and I went to the open house at the fire department and it was wonderful, floors were spotless, everything was just shipshape. And anyway, they had a lot of little tiny garden running around in the house, it was really cute. But we appreciate that you did that for the community.
So on the fourteenth, I believe it was the same day, we also had our open garden day in the Stanton Community Garden. And there was a fantastic track that we were on, which was a dream. It, no, not that day, it wasn't great. It was great weather, but we were just surprised to see the immense amount of interest from the community. And furthermore, I had found out that there were a lot of people from out of town. We had someone from Northridge, we had someone from Riverside, we had someone from Pomona, and there was people from everywhere coming to see our garden. So I was very pleased to see that social media works, putting the word out there. So we have a very successful, we have many, many booths where people could do different activities until there was something for everyone that attended. And thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for also blessing us with the help of Stanton. Also helped us get, um, two pallets worth of compost which we gave to everyone who attended and they were very helpful.
Alice, won't tell you what she did to me though. Uh, I never draw the winning tickets no matter where I go because you can't please anybody. So she insisted and I said, okay. So I drew out the first ticket for the grand prize and my wife won. Needless to say that that was quickly returned. And so that worked out. But the, the, the moral of that story is, uh, always watch out when your poor tickets are where you're at. Okay, we'll move on now to, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, later.
In need of beer, I transmitted a mosquito. It's turned up last week on verge of getting, uh, not us, but in, uh, passing here. So it's in Lake County, it's close by and hopefully will be more. So it's something to be really careful with. Uh, if you go out, count the mosquitoes, uh, that, uh, mosquito repellent is really important to wear. And if you feel like you're getting sick or fever or anything like that, go to the lab.
Do we have our first type four case of that, Sam?
We have, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have the transmit. Then you need, um, mosquito is just asking.
I had a bunch in the dump, um, that, uh, it was a fundraiser for the United Lake of California and, uh, it was quite successful. And, uh, that's where I got my hoodgloves with the compost, so we'll get one for you. You're actually giving, I think I'm a big driver. Okay, um, this is, uh, items for future meetings.
I think I have one though, so it's going to be here. I, I think there was a lot of people that thought of the city, uh, uh, seemed like we had a few more homes in these areas. And, um, most of Thursday night we decided to just drive around and see what the city looked like at night. And we were planning to take the public that in twenty nineteen, uh, tour of the city event. And it is a very different place. And what I'd like to, um, propose for our future meetings would be, uh, like meeting on the go is that maybe we could possibly rent, uh, a bus or something, uh, give the city council, city manager, our police chief, and just go through the city and see what's happening out there. Most of us, um, aren't out at night and it's getting dark much sooner now, it's getting dark even sooner. Let's see what it looks like out there. How's this homeless, that's a bit high. Any type of, uh, situation, we see if there's more cars out there, if there's more traffic, uh, just what's going on in our city at night. So, um, hopefully we'll get down, get you there and see the traffic up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a request? Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, no motion needed at this time.
Okay.
So it's a request, we'll bring it back for discussion only in the next meeting. And then there we can go with the agenda. Correct, sir.
Okay, okay, so go ahead. No, there is? Okay, um, yes, I'd like to bring this back for discussion, uh, at our next meeting. And it's going to be a review of our cannabis ordinance. Uh, we started that process almost four years ago and I think it's time that we can take a look at it to see if there's any amendments that might make it more beneficial to the community, um, to the vendors and to, uh, the people that are involved in that business. You know, uh, it took us a long time. I'm not sure about the process of the review, but I think it's good we had a subcommittee that actually spent a great deal of time, uh, bringing that to us. I think it's a good time for us to look back and see what we might be able to do to be directed, to give it more flexibility or to give it the, uh, the once-over. I think it's time to do that. One of the reasons that I'm also bringing that up, I know that we all know what an E and A is, that's an exclusive right of negotiation to negotiate. And oftentimes when people make an agreement such as, uh, it's written in ordinance, it runs out, and it runs out a lot of times before they're ready to finish or to get there and they need an extension. It's come to my attention that in November of this year, some of the agreements that we had with our existing, um, I guess you would call them, the winners of the licensing are going to expire, but yet we have some of them that haven't completed or almost completed their projects. A lot of it due to themselves, but also some of it is the fact that we had quite a bit of a changeover in our community development department at that time. I don't want, I don't want to point, uh, you know, who is right, who is wrong. I think it would be good for us to do our due diligence and take a look, the feasibility of extending some of those guidelines or target dates. I kind of feel like, why would I want to start over with three years ago? I, in order for someone to make this need a few more months, uh, to complete a project, especially relative to cannabis, especially in an area of where we didn't really have a lot of people apply in the past. One of the other things is, is that whenever you extend an exclusive right to negotiate, if you give them a longer period of time, there's usually some kind of application for that. I would also like to bring up, for us to discuss at that time, if it's, if we would like to put it on the agenda, um, if, uh, and how much, uh, we would charge a particular business if they ask for an extension. Um, we can actually, one of the ideas I had was, uh, if you relate that to the amount of sales tax that we lost because they were not up and running for a period of time, that seems very fair. But I'm open to any suggestions. If you don't want to have any fees at all and you want to let the board hold it with the extension, that's fine too. These are the things I'd like to discuss, uh, and then if you decide we go forward with it after reviewing it, you don't want to make any changes, that's fine. But I do think we need to take work and take an analysis and have our staff, thank you. That's it. Now, if you want me to write that on that little piece of paper, you want to be, but I will do my best. Thank you. All right, we'll move on now. Um, this is anything for a future study session. Items from council?
Thank you, Mayor, I got mine.
Okay, it's up to you.
I want to answer, Mayor.
Okay. Charlie's got fifteen minutes.
I'm trying to make this really fast.
Oh, no, if it was cheap dog, then I'd be stressed if anything were okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, City Council, tonight I'll be covering a September, uh, statistical data for Stan Police Services. In September, Stanton, uh, the deputies responded to one thousand three hundred and fifteen calls for service, averaging about forty-three per day. Uh, they also, um, they observed four hundred and sixty-nine violations of law and acted appropriately with forty citations and arrest. That's definitely up from last month, um, so the productivity of the deputies are doing great and that's because we're full of staff. So that's why we agree with this. Uh, the deputies made thirty-four arrests, nine felony bookings, five misdemeanor bookings, uh, eleven warrant arrests and nineteen white bookings. They also cited, um, we need to make use of the citations, um, which is definitely up from last month as well. Our Stanton Motor Deputy issued a hundred and ninety-one, uh, traffic citations. Um, it's just him and he's doing a great job with a lot of the different calls on with regards to stop signs, uh, the crosswalks, uh, he's inundated with that, uh, so that's not a little bit. Um, we're going to be doing some additional suppressions in the near future as pertains to, you know, traffic, you know, the holidays coming, um, our traffic collisions, you know, you know, statistically do go up, uh, so we'll make sure that that does issue. So we're going to be doing that in the near future. The Stanton deputies have handled, uh, it was zero homicides, a zero rapes, uh, two robberies, seventeen minor assaults, eleven burglaries, forty-one thefts and four stolen vehicles. And our gang unit, uh, they arrested ten for a total of thirty this year, which is definitely up. Uh, the reason it's up is because, uh, last month we did a suppression, um, and we're able to take, you know, uh, several in custody, um, and they arranged, you know, from probation violations to parole violations, uh, to possession of handguns, uh, to narcotics, uh, so it's a wide variety of stuff, so they did a really good job with that. Um, our two Stanton investigators, they helped fifty-one cases, um, and they closed eighteen, which is, uh, very, very good and very fast. So I'm definitely pleased with that. Our special enforcement team, uh, they arrested twenty, uh, nine felony bookings, eleven misdemeanors. Um, they gave citations, um, six for public, eighty-three for, for narcotics. They contacted twenty homeless, um, and they all declined services. Uh, they were to contact, um, seventeen probationers, uh, five parolees, uh, thirteen prostitutes, um, and one of them, uh, was a juvenile, and they were, they were able to get her off the streets, which is a big success. Um, they recovered, um, three stolen vehicles, um, and they worked with our North Narces, uh, several narcotics gangs, uh, the trafficking, you know, task force. Um, so they're, the, the two Stanton deputies are hand-selected, um, they're very, very good, um, they're, they, you know, do a really good job and they're very motivated, uh, to go out and to do, do that police work that really else wants to do. So I'm very proud of them. Um, they also work with our two major LOs with regards to all this, all the data that you guys have done with regards to that. That's one of the home stretch. Um, very exciting to hear about the Woodland Dollars. Uh, that was, I'm, I hadn't heard, you know, that just yet, so I'm very happy about that. Uh, the inside of the station looks fantastic and my hope is that, uh, this coming December, I would like the city council to come see it. Uh, we actually decorate a pretty nice for the holidays, um, a little bit much more than the last couple of years, uh, Stanton Station, you know, definitely looks nice. Thank you for the city, you know, for allowing, um, I think the biggest thing would be all the teamwork. Um, this, you know, the deputy sheriff's kind of told me, I, I think I stopped counting that ten, um, that they've truly feel supported by the city staff, uh, by the city manager, um, and by just the different departments. That's been said in the past and I, I just wanted to make sure that I told you guys thank you. Um, they like the ride-alongs, um, which they like having you guys out there for those. Um, so like I said, um, you know, they, the two deputies did ask me tonight, can we please, you know, reach out, if they want to come ride along, you know, please let them know. So I wanted to pass that along to you guys. We did an operation, um, with our trafficking, um, you know, task force. Um, we were able to, um, take three pens to jail, which is, that's a massive win. Uh, we really weren't trying to go after the prostitutes themselves, we were trying to go after the pens, because they carry, um, and can range from, you know, you know, from fentanyl to guns, uh, to stolen vehicles, um, that's kind of the root of the problem. So we were able to take three to jail and I think that was a major success. We just did, um, I'm happy to report, uh, the W S and S, you know, store, um, has been burglarized and robbed, um, for the last several months. We have generated numerous calls for service there. Um, they're working with us, um, and we just did a sting and we took four, uh, you know, a four in custody. We found a lot of stolen merchandise. There's still an investigation going on, it's a lot bigger than Stanton, I'll leave it at that, but, um, I have a report that we have taken people, you know, to custody and, um, some of that property has been returned. Uh, so I think there's more to follow with that, but I always want to get that to you guys. The second component is a special thank you to Jim Randy, to his team, um, with regards to the legal marijuana dispensary, uh, that was able to be closed up. Um, you know, search warrants were done, um, I was able to get ahold of our, our narcotics team, um, they were able to take the case, um, and we want to shut that down. There was a lot of, um, extracurricular stuff that was taken, um, that should have been there, uh, so it was a major workforce, you know, for Stanton. Um, and then the last component is, um, regards to the food vending and to the street vendors. Um, it took a little different turn this last time. And so I think the communication and teamwork, I think with the health area scene, I think with code enforcement, you know, you know, I think with the sheriff's department, that kind of deterred some of the, which I think could have led to a violent assault, uh, and we were able to stop that. Um, the deputy sheriff, you know, who was out there, you know, was one of our HLOs, um, and he was able to work with code enforcement to get it back safely. Uh, and my kind of thing to the future is that when any of these, if these things do kind of arise or these things do come up, is to always have us present. We are going to be, our next one, we are going to be adding a second deputy sheriff to it, um, due to, um, the clientele's who, um, are good with this all. Uh, so like I said, um, I didn't think these were going to be dangerous, but, you know, like I said, unfortunately, you know, this one did take us, you know, kind of a different, you know, uh, different turn. Um, so that was representation.
You know, Charles, I just wanted to let you know, um, that we have been doing a lot of extra things and they're not going unnoticed and the results are public. You know, I think the one of the things I appreciate about this council is that we're proactive. You know, there's really no lock over, I mean, let's be honest, uh, you know, we're pretty much up against the wall, especially with state mandates. And so by us being creative with our, uh, not only with our staff, but also our legal department and USC enforcement and Jim and his guys, I think we're making the change. Now, a lot of people don't see that change, but those of us that are here every day do. It's become very evident. I also know that that's not going to stop us, we're becoming more creative and that we're going to get, um, better results. And I'm sure that the public is already becoming aware. And so if you allow the deputies to know how much we appreciate them, uh, taking these extra steps and helping us back with these extra programs, up down to headquarters and tell, tell Mr. Warrens how much, or Chair Warrens, how much we appreciate, um, him giving us that opportunity. You know, we always say that we spend a lot of money for you guys, but it's times like this, it's really worth everything that we spend. I know the rest of my council has had enough of the change to work with you and that you've been able to meet all of their, um, requests and needs as well as their staff. So, you know, I think if, if somebody doesn't ever say thank you, then you'll know, but I, I know we all feel the same way. But Jim, you and your staff, don't, I don't know how much we appreciate what they do because you're our, you're the, you're a representative of the community. And we don't hear much bad things about you, we just hear a lot of good things. And so tell them that I will be very dumbness, because I do promise I'm going to go to one of their, um, secret meetings before they go out in the field, you know, so I'm not way out in the field because it's becoming way too dangerous at high age. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Okay, before we adjourn tonight, Sandy, I think we have something for our, uh, the pumpkin, the Halloween festival. I'm waiting on your answers.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we have our big Halloween festival this Saturday, Stanton Central Park. The event is from four to eight P M. First costume contest are our furry friends, starting at four thirty, and we have each age group every thirty minutes left out. We'd love to have council participate in the costume contest as judges or just have fun as our game moves, our community groups. We have a lot of inflatables, we have a very generous donation from the Lions Club that's allowed us to expand. So on those inflatables, make sure our lines aren't so long for families. So excited for this one and we look forward to seeing them.
Thank you. So we're all set, um, that's a little bit of a few, uh, that agree. And Michelle? It was about this time last year when the, uh, it was the State Auditor's Office came out with how wonderful we were. Can you let us know if we're still wonderful or not at some point? Or we still need to get, you want to hear us to copy next, we think that's fine, but I just wanted to reach out to you because it did, it, we, we made some really good things, we continue to do that, so I'd like to hear your report. I think the council would be very interested in that. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, sure, Mr. Mayor. We are in the middle of our audit, so we just closed our books and you will have final numbers, um, of our audited numbers very shortly. And we have been, um, communicating some good news in our monthly gender info to the council and our monthly financial reports. And I think with our September, well, with our financial report, you'll see at the next meeting, you'll start seeing some cannabis tax revenue coming in, um, and that's just the start of it. And as we've had a couple of months now through September, uh, two full months of our two retail coming in, we're starting to see growth and more consistent revenue for the two retail businesses. So those are some positives, um, in the city.
Okay, great. Any other business before us tonight? Okay, I'm going to ensure that your next regular schedule.